I call the meeting to order and I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Neweydowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, any public comment? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda, the authorization for payroll and bills, the town fund, general assistance road and sewer, and then also my reports, social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation and financial. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, a roll call.
Trustee Neweydowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, discussion and potential action on approval of minutes. We've got the regular board meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023, and the special board meeting on September 5th, 2023. If I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Can I just mention, you got an email today because my first set that I sent to Paul on the special board meeting was incomplete, so you got an email with the completed one on it.
And the copy's in there.
Oh, they're in there, okay, great.
Okay, so if I get the motions and we can discuss it if there's anything that needs to be changed, there's a motion?
A second.
Okay, who made the motion to approve?
Dick.
Dick and then Dale. Okay, is there any discussion on this? You guys got the amendment? Okay, any, if not, do the roll call.
Trustee Neweydowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, we've got our presentation from Crowell here, and we can, go ahead, we've got a couple of new board members, so if you want to introduce yourself too.
Certainly. Thank the board for inviting me out tonight. My name is Mark Toll, I'm with Daniel Crane Company. Daniel Crane Company has worked as a township engineer since the 1990s. Myself, I've worked since 2004 with township projects. I'm here tonight to discuss the township's infrastructure projects, where we're at with a few of our projects. The roads program, we began in 2018 with some resurfacing of the residential roads within the township. A resurfaces milling and paving of the surface, then replacement with new pavement. Some full depth patching was performed in areas that failed a proof roll. Proof roll is taking a fully loaded truck filled with stone and rolling it across after the surface has been milled off, see if there's any deflection, see if there's any other issues with it. That was observed through geotechnical engineer and myself and highway commissioner at the time. Resurface differs from a full depth roadway reconstruction. Full depth roadway reconstruction would include the removal of all materials of a roadway from the surface, the binder, the stone base and the sub base down to essentially clay ground if that was stable, otherwise it may include further patching and replacement with large stone to help support a brand new road structure. Road reconstruction, next slide. The residential roads within the township generally have unconfined edges, which means they don't have curbs, there's nothing holding up the outer structure of the roads. We do see some cracking over time within these road edges. We recently observed some edge cracking, some alligatoring, a few small areas of rutting, which is something that we want to address with some full depth patching. We propose to go in and perform patches anywhere from three to five feet in width and the length through certain cracked areas. It would be down 12 inches of depth. We would replace with stone, come back in and resurface that with new surface. That work would be performed before the winter season, and we would be going out for costs on that very quickly here, within the next few weeks. Most asphalt plants close by November 15th, if not sooner, depending on the weather, so we want to try and catch that before the season ends, otherwise we have to push off until next spring. On our township sanitary sewer system, the township maintains a sanitary sewer system throughout the various municipalities as well as within unincorporated areas. They're in various areas, there's 237 residential customers, there's approximately 84 commercial sewer customers. There's over five miles of sewer the township maintains. The sizes range from eight to 12 inch size, and there's 141 manholes that are within the system. Township has a long-term operation and maintenance program. This program is required by the IEPAs as well as the Metropolitan Water Acclimation District, and compliance with this long-term program is reported annually to the Metropolitan Water Acclimation District. Township sanitary sewer system was established by ordinance in the early 1970s. The system consists of older clay pipes, ductile iron pipes, ABS pipes and some newer PVC pipe. The system is broken up through the various areas, as seen in the percentages there, and the system is completely funded through a user fee system by ordinance. The long-term maintenance program includes annualized or semi-annualized sewer televising, manhole inspections, the sewer point repairs, which means you go in and you actually have to excavate and repair a sewer if you encounter cracks or breaks within the lines. Sewer lining, which is a process where you pull a liner through the sewer and essentially create a new thinner sewer that bonds to the inside of the existing sewers. This is very useful with clay pipes that tend to be very leaky, tend to crack and deteriorate over time. Some of the system is well over 50 years old, the old clay pipes. The service life within those sewer systems is about 50 years, so many of those linings have already occurred. We also take a look through the manhole inspection program, we determine if there's manhole repairs or replacements that need to be made. Again, reiterating that a report is provided to the MWRD every year for the project. Here's a little example of some closed circuit televising, a snapshot of sewer videos that get reviewed. You can see on the left, that's the inside of a sewer that has an offset joint. That joint is going to allow clean water to infiltrate into the system, which is one of the items that the MWRD and the IEPA is trying to reduce. There's also a crack within that sewer, which is the upper arrow that's pointed there. On the right is the interior of a line sewer that's with cured in place pipeline already pulled through. So the status of the system, the entire sewer system has been televised several times, most recently in the last decade, the entire system was televised, manholes, all the manholes were inspected and ranked. The entire system was ranked. About two-thirds of the system has been lined. 187 manhole repairs were performed. All the high priority repairs have been completed, those are sewers that we determined that we observed that were cracking or they had holes in them. Occasionally, you'll see like a gas line running through them or some other utility running through them. That's been repaired, and we've moved into a preventative maintenance process to line the remainder of the system as we move forward. And all this work is performed by contractors that we've gone out for public bid on this work. To follow up, what we're going to move forward with is to go out to bid in the coming months and then the next month or so with a bid process for a public bid of sanitary sewer repair system. We're approximating about 5,000 linear feet of sewer lining to be performed. Here we are. That's going to go out to bid in October, we'll publish a bid in November, we'll have a bid opening, we'll qualify the contractor and we'll discuss the contracts with them. Over the winter, the construction will occur. They begin with a pre-lining closed circuit TV to see the condition of the sewer system. Then the liner is pulled through, and then there's a post lining CCTV to ensure that the liner has bonded and there aren't any twists or any issues with the liner that was put in. We'll again provide a report to the MWRD. Next spring, we're proposing to move forward with some smoke testing. This is a requirement of the short-term operation and maintenance requirements that the Metropolitan Water Acclimation District has. There's approximately 6,000 linear feet that smoke testing will be performed in. Smoke is piped into a sewer, it's blocked off at either end, and then you can look and see smoke actually can come up through the ground or it'll go up through downspouts if there's cross connections or potentially through vent pipes in houses if there's cross connections so that you can observe if there's any cross connections that need to be addressed. So that'll be something we'll be looking to go out to bid for in the spring. Some additional ongoing services that we provide, we provide plan review for sanitary, new sanitary sewer services. We also provide plan review for any new houses that are proposed in the unincorporated area to take a look at drainage plans in conjunction with the Cook County permit that's issued. And we talk with residents as they may have concerns with any of the infrastructure that the township maintains. Principally, we get a call every so often on a sewer concern. We work with the on-call contractors that the township has worked with for years, and they'll go out and take a look at the sewers and see what needs to be done, if they need to be flushed. Often, the municipality sometimes beat the contractor out there because the homeowner within the incorporated areas will contact the village in conjunction with the township. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is the, is the goal, the ultimate goal, I believe, is to have 100% of the system lined, or is that?
It'll be close to 100%. The newer PVC pipe doesn't necessarily need to be lined, but certainly all of the areas that are encompassed with the older clay pipe or ductile iron pipe and that are of aging years in the 30, 40, 50 year range are pipes that we're looking to line.
Okay, and once, once we have, basically have it lined the way we need to, then it should be for an extended period of time more maintenance and, and-
Correct.
-emergency type repair type situation?
Correct. We'll continue with the operations program from a standpoint of, we'll still televise the entire system about once a decade, thereby doing, you know, about 20% at a time, 10 to 20% at a time. We'll continue with manhole inspections and then obviously respond to any calls that we get for any potential repairs.
Okay, and then on the, on the roads, is there, the, I mean, have we, we had a plan to redo, resurface a large portion of the unincorporated areas. Do we really have any significant areas still to do, or is that more that we're looking to do, how would you say?
All of the residential areas were resurfaced in 2018 and 2019.
So now it's just repairs?
Now we're going back and looking at any areas that are wearing over time.
Okay.
We'll get into any, any crack ceiling, where we're observing the, you know, semi-annual observation of if there's any deterioration further in particular areas, and then we're dressing them as they come up.
Okay, and the township roads have historically been without curbs, and that's because they don't have the same zoning like municipalities would have, so the builders in most cases would just put the basic road down?
Correct. Most, most of the subdivisions within the unincorporated areas within the township were constructed in the 50s and 60s, and Cook County didn't require you to have any curb and gutter. They have a rural cross-section to them, they have ditch drainage to them, and it's a function of how the subdivisions were designed. You'd have to really redesign the entire grading and drainage system as well as the roads if you wanted to move to a different model within the subdivisions.
Good. I just mentioned that because somebody had asked me the other day, why don't townships, why don't unincorporated areas have curbs? And it's because of, like he said, historically, the county, county regulations didn't require it, so the builders didn't do it.
Correct.
And, and while in municipalities, often that was required when new, when new areas were developed within the municipalities. And you'll see that through townships throughout, everywhere you look.
Correct.
Okay, the, on the, on the sewers, it was, it was interesting too, that we have, are we have, do we have concentrated areas or do we have little pieces?
They're, they're semi-concentrated, but they're disconnected. We have areas in different municipalities, we have areas that are completely in unincorporated areas. We've reached out to the municipalities over the years, we have conveyed some areas to the municipalities where there were small areas that had become incorporated, they've, they've taken on some sewers for, you know, a block with a cul-de-sac or something to that nature. But generally, there are a lot of areas that are still within incorporated areas that the sewers are still part of Elk Grove Township sewer system.
Now, today, for instance, like, if we have an area that's annexed, will usually, from your experience, will then the municipalities that annex that, do they take responsibility for the sewers, or is that separate?
The sewers should be conveyed with the annexation based on state statute.
And in the past, the reason we have sewers underneath incorporated areas is because of some deal way back when?
Yeah, I think that statute came about sometime in the, in the 2000s or late 90s. Prior to that, when, when areas were incorporated, they, municipalities didn't necessarily have to take that infrastructure.
Right, so that's why we have sewers, is because back when, we, we provided the sewer services, but as, back when, when it was annexed, it didn't, they didn't necessarily take the sewers along with it, so we were left with sewers. At some point, when we get all the sewers up to, up to code, or whatever, you'd say they're all lined and we're all comfortable with that, at some point, we probably will reach out, probably maybe not during this, this term we have, but reach out to the municipalities and basically say, okay, the sewers are, the sewers are in your areas and in your area, municipal areas are up to code or are properly operating now, you need to take responsibility for them. And there is legislation, where there is state law now that would actually allow us to force that issue, but we haven't done it because we're waiting for engineers to get, as we're working through this process, to get the sewers up to a level where we could legitimately say, hey, we're turning these over to you in good shape. But that's still, we still got several years to go before that.
Correct. Most, all we initially targeted, as well as the, the areas that needed the most attention.
Right.
We also addressed a priority to the areas that were within the incorporated areas.
Right.
A lot of the outlying areas that we're addressing now are within the unincorporated areas.
Okay.
And even if all the system gets conveyed that's within the incorporated areas, there still will be a portion of the system that's in an unincorporated Elk Grove Township.
All right, and it's a pay-as-you-go system? Basically, they're paying for these services, it's not, it's not, it's not part of our, part of the levy per se? No, it's not part of the levy?
No, it's, it's a fee-based system, based on the ordinance. The fee hasn't needed to be raised for many years. We work within the constraints of the system and address the sewer system. And generally, sewers are buried eight to 12 feet in the ground. They do require maintenance over long periods of time, but they're not prone to being disturbed like your sanitary, like your storm sewer systems are or even your services are, which tend to be shallower, that could run into other utilities if they're being directionally bored or if there's some construction going on. The sanitary sewers are typically your deepest utility that's, that's within the area.
Now, if it got to the point where, let's say we had only a very small portion, let's say the, the sewers that, under the incorporated areas were taken responsibly by the municipalities, and we only had a small unincorporated area, and the fees were for 10, 15 homes or something like that, would that create an issue, or how does that, because you don't only have money coming from 15 homes then?
Correct, correct. It would probably, over the long-term, be more challenging to maintain the system, to do any large-scale point repairs. We do keep a certain reserve within the sewer system. If we do have to go in to excavate to make a repair for a sewer, it could be into, you know, five digits to make those repairs. You have to excavate down 12 feet, you have to repair paving, you have to encounter other utilities you may have to cross to get down there. It can get into the tens of thousands of dollars just for a singular repair, and that could become an issue with, with very few residents or commercial areas still on the system. Once we get to that point, we may want to explore some other options. We may want to see if we can convey that to the local municipalities that's nearby, if they would be willing to take it over. There are other, are other private utility companies that do serve different areas with, with water and sewer.
Right.
And that could be another avenue to explore, to have it go on to their system.
Because more and more of our, our, our unincorporated areas being annexed, and at some point, if, if the area that we're servicing with sewers becomes rather small, then I would be concerned that we wouldn't have the economies of scale to make it work, so to speak, so, but that's down the line, I was just, okay. Does anybody have any other questions? So Crowell basically handles our roads, both in terms of maintenance and repair, and then they're, they are, have, are responsible, or we're, we're, they're, we hire them basically to maintain our sewer system as well too, of which, at some point, it would be to our advantage to pass on to or to transfer it over to municipalities, or is that, that's not a core competency of ours, and most townships don't have sewers, to responsibility for sewers, I don't believe.
Only one other one that I have, two others I know of.
Yeah.
And they're small.
Just the way things worked out back when. And it could have been two back then that they thought, well, okay, we'll let them take the homes and we'll keep the sewers because it'll be a cash generator for us, I, who knows what the thought process was back then. But we do have significant amount of sewers that we're working through to upgrade and bring into compliance with what we, what are considered to be appropriate standards at this stage, and as he said, we have 67% done, and then we always have ongoing, they always have ongoing work and testing that needs and filings that need to be done in connection with it. So we're very fortunate to be working with a firm that's been very, very, very good about this. And same thing with the roads, they've been outstanding in terms of us maintaining the roads, and we did a major upgrade in 18, I guess it was, and, and we're, we're just continuing to try to maintain that. Our, our roads, because they don't have curbs, always have an ongoing issue in terms of the, particularly if you have trucks and other large vehicles going across, because there's no curbs that'll push it out, and so periodically, we're going to have to have repairs in that regard.
We're looking at a couple of hundred square feet of, of area. When you take a look at, you know, several miles of roadway, you're into the tens of thousands of square yards that we're dressing in the roadway, so you're really talking about a small sliver of the roads that have any cracking or any distress showing.
Right, and I guess too, I mean, I, I know that you guys have tended to try to wait until you had a reasonable amount of work to do, because you don't want to be coming in and fixing little things at a time because the cost becomes-
Right, there is some economy scale to that, to have enough of an area to take care of, you're not going to come out and do one tiny area, you're going to be paying quite a bit more for, for just that small area.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
When do you anticipate completing the whole lining of the system?
Inlining the entire system? I would anticipate within the next two years, the next two to three years.
Yeah.
We've got a lot in the last few-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, a bunch.
Yeah, within the last, within the last decade, we've, we've done that, that two-thirds of the system, so.
Did you say that at one, I'm just aside, do we found fish or catfish in part of it or some, somebody told me we-
I, I think that was a storm line on some report that we got from, from a local municipality in some storm sewers.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it was a little bit of a jest that they found.
I mean, they were in bad shape, but that's, that would be pretty bad shape, yeah. Okay, all right, anybody have, if nobody has anything else, Mark, you, thanks very much, really appreciate you coming on in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
And they will be coming back to us with the, a proposal for repairs that need to be done in the near term. If it's under 30,000, we can just move ahead with it, if it's over 30,000, we'd have to go out to bid, so we'll have to see what they, what they come back and say what they feel they need to do. Does anybody have any other questions regarding that? Otherwise, let's move on then.
Just a quick question, Joe.
Yep.
To the pay-as-you-go, it's a paid service.
Yeah.
The funds go directly to?
No, it goes, goes, we, we have a separate, yeah, sewer fund, and those funds go in there and we pay them out of our, out of our, out of our, our funds. So they're, they're contracted, we have a contract with them, and we pay them basically as, as, they invoice us as they do work as required, and they-
And do we invoice residents?
No, the, well, what they do is, we get a, on the fee-based business, they, they pay, our residents pay, unincorporated pay a fee every, every year, and then basically that, that builds, that builds up our, the fund that we maintain, and then we have to manage that in terms of repairs and other things. And it's, I don't, it's, we've never really had a problem in terms of the-
I don't know what you're talking about.
The sewer fund, we've never had an issue financially with that, that fund or anything like that. We've been able to manage that effectively and still proceed with the, the type of upgrades that we've needed to do. But I am a little bit concerned longer term that if, if, if the annexation continues and the, the base of sewers that we maintain declines significantly, then the remaining residents that we, that we, we're responsible for the sewer may become small, small enough where it becomes very difficult for us to financially maintain that. You know, because that's, that's the offset to the fact that we can, legislation now allows us to off, to put the sewers in the hands of the municipalities under, under unincorporated ground, under incorporated ground, incorporated ground. We haven't pursued that yet until we have the sewers properly updated. But let's say we went and did that with Des Plaines and Arlington and Mount Prospect, put it to them, forced the issue, then we still would have some unincorporated areas, small unincorporated areas, that would maybe be difficult for us to maintain then, so we have to pay, we have to pay attention to how, how, how we handle this. We don't want to put ourselves in a difficult situation where we do have a small, real small sewer system that, that, that we, we have to maintain, but financially isn't, so the rural fire district doesn't, doesn't, can't, can't, can't maintain itself. So we, we have to think through that and, and be prepared to find someone to take that over too, if we do the other things.
What happens, what happens in the case when the, the village, for example, annexes residential areas?
Well, that's what we were just saying, you, now what they-
Which, well, which will shortly not be residential areas anymore.
Yeah, no, if, for instance, with Repolo, I don't, I don't know if we have, do we have the sewers under Repolo? I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't believe so.
I don't think we do, but let's say we did.
Okay.
When Elk Grove annexed that, the way it is today, those sewers go, go with the annexation.
Okay. Okay.
So, let's say the sewers, and they dig up that whole thing, they'll be digging up all the sewers and stuff there, and have to relay it. That'd be Elk Grove, or the developer would probably end up having to put the sewer, redo and put all the sewers in, and, and they'd be required by the village to do that. But in the past, for whatever reason, we retained some of the sewers under the areas that were annexed. And I'm not sure the rationale behind that, if that just was, at that point, the villages didn't have to take the sewers, or if at that point, we chose to keep the sewers for some reason. But in any particular case, it doesn't take a lot of time and effort on our part, other than to work with our contractors to make sure it's maintained. But it's something that really isn't a core competency of ours, and really would be best handled by the, handled by the villages. Okay? All right. If there's nothing else on that, then we'll go to reports. We have our assessor.
We are still waiting to find out when we're going to be open for board review and certification from the CCAO. And we're kind of slow now, except for doing permits and having our seniors come in and check various things and resources. So, as I say, this is our lull before the storm. I think we're hoping that we don't get slammed with second installment tax bills and board review at the same time, but things like that happen. So, we wait.
All right. Is there any questions for the assessor at this point? If not, clerk?
I have a written report. We just had one for you. The property they asked about had actually been incorporated into Mount Prospect, so Administrator Piac gave him the information they needed. We participated in the Elk Grove Parade, which was very fun once it stopped drizzling, had a good turnout. And the agency grant applications went out in August, they're due back November 1st. So, thank you Administrator Piac for getting those out. And then, the last thing is, we are appointing John Scaletta of Arlington Heights as our new community member for the agency grant committee. So, I'll just give you a little information about him, and then we do need to approve him. Let's see. John lives in Arlington Heights, married with two sons. He is a management and consulting, he's in management and consulting for shopping centers and movie theaters. He was on the Arlington Heights Board for 16 years, and he is involved in Cub Scouts with his son. So, he does have some good experience being on the Arlington Heights Board.
16, 16 years on the village board is pretty substantial. Is there any, does anybody have, before I move forward with making a motion to approve his appointment, does anybody have any other questions for Sue Ellen? What we're doing is, we have a slot on the agency grant committee still open, and we need two residents, a minimum of two residents. And we had appointed a resident two, two months ago?
I think last month, Steve Grisick.
Yeah, Grisick. And now, we have found a second person, a resident that'd be willing to serve on the board, and both of these should be nice additions to the board. So, if there's no other questions, got to get a motion to approve his appointment?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Okay, let's, let's take a roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
Okay, supervisors' report. Couple things on the construction, the challenge course. If you go out back and look, the challenge course is being installed right now. Parts of it are in. The track for the bike, bike safety, they, we're getting ready to lay the asphalt, but then we've had really some rainy weather, so it's real muddy, so they can't do it right now, but that would be the next step. They've also taken off the first several inches of asphalt on the back. So, we're in a position, we're actually making some progress here. Supposedly, this is supposed to be done this month, but it's not. But then again, there's always extenuating circumstances, as you find with almost all these projects. But we are at a point here where I can see the light at the end of the tunnel for outside, and we should be able to move forward with utilizing these facilities next spring. And we will have a grand opening, not necessarily the first time we use it, but we'll do it at a point where we can have a little bit of a, a community involvement in the, in the opening of both of those as well, too. In terms of the inside construction work we're doing, in the youth, youth programs room, or youth community programs room, they have put the flooring in, which is that, sort of like having a gym, it's plastic, but not plastic, like a rubberized type floor. And they're beginning work on the office for the youth services, which is attached to it. The bathrooms are pretty well done now. I think there's still a little bit more to go. The next step after that will be, once that gets done, and that's the big concern, the next step after that would be the big room in back, where we're just cleaning that out to turn that into storage for food and for medical supplies and the likes. So, we're moving ahead here. The grant, there's no, nothing new to report on the grant from the state that Representative Busman obtained for us. We're continuing to track that, and when we can submit invoices, when we're allowed to submit invoices to obtain part of that $100,000 grant, we will do it. And that's helping, that's helping us expand a little more broadly what we were going to do, do back there. In terms of the rural fire district, we did, yes, we voted last time to join the suit with the village of Mount Prospect, a, the, the, we filed to get an injunction on the, on the sale of the property that the rural fire district has. As I'm sure Brian knows, that is not, that takes time, it's not immediately, it gets on the docket and then takes, could take weeks, could be months, I guess, to be further when we get to that. So, we needed to go in with a temporary restraining order, yeah, whatever, is it T O R?, But I don't know, temporary order of restraint, or whatever it is, so that they don't go sell it in the meantime. Because what they could do is, if there's no T O R., that what they could do is, they could just go sell it anyway, and then it becomes OBE. It's, it's, you know, while we're waiting for the case to be, be heard, it could be gone. So, they've gone in with that, that'll be next Wednesday. It was delayed a week, it was supposed to be this week, but they, the rural fire district has fired their attorneys, their second set of attorneys, and have brought in a Chicago firm. And they weren't available to do that hearing, and asked if they could do it next week, and they said, we will not sell any of the assets prior to that. So, the village and us agreed to it. We, Mount Prospect continues to take the lead on this, but our attorney, Jason Trembley, has been very involved working with them, and has been a real asset to them in terms of, in terms of positioning, the documentation, as well as, as well as our involvement. And he's keeping us informed as to the status. I don't, I don't, I still don't understand what the rural fire district is seeking to achieve at this point, unless they, the only thing that I can see is that they, they want to sell those assets and do a rebate back to the taxpayers. But tax law doesn't seem to allow that. I mean, the, the, the state statutes don't seem to allow that. And if they don't, it doesn't make sense to go through this whole process of selling the assets, or not turning it over, I mean, and not titling it over. I'm, I'm, they must believe that by selling these assets, they will be able to rebate, find some way to rebate it back to the residents. That's the only rationale that I can see for them to continue to pursue this. The, like I said, they've hired a new attorney. They will not be, the residents will not be moving out for a couple more months, so there's still a runway for us to negotiate with them. And hopefully, this suit will, will encourage them to negotiate. But at some point, if they sell their property and move out, those members of the board will not, will not be able to be on the board anymore. And unless they appoint replacements, the board will just cease, cease to exist, basically. So, I'm not sure really where the end game is going to come here. But we continue to participate because we feel it's in the best interest of our residents in the unincorporated areas, which is, and for this RFD, or this rural fire district, it's largely the four mobile home courts, or manufactured home courts, where we just feel it's really important that there be a plan for transition, and that some of the equipment, the firehouse and some of the equipment, like the tanker, are turned over for continued, for continuous protection services. There was a fire there, I guess, in the mobile home courts the other, the other day. And, and the indication is, the word we got is, that part of the problem they're having is the equipment working on the tollways are sometimes hitting the electrical lines and creating issues with electrical, causing electrical fires. So, right now, there's some, there's some issues there in terms of, in terms of fire risk. The rural fire district is still responding to that, though we, Elk Grove and so forth are still providing mutual support. But at some point, if the rural fire district ceases to exist, then what will happen is, it'll be up to the villages to respond out of their, I mean, they will respond, but they're not required to respond, but they will respond to those. So, that's, that's where we are on that right now. I'm going to get a update from our attorney on Wednesday, but I'm not expecting too much difference. The senile report, I think the two committees have pretty, the two subgroups, subcommittees have pretty well wrapped up their discussions, and I think Cory's working with each subcommittee to, to get their, get their reports together. And then, and then, then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll, we'll meet again to review each of those reports. Any, and any feedback from those reports, or any, any suggested changes will be discussed there. And then, we'll have one more meeting where the combined reports, the two together, will be approved, or, or further discussion if it's necessary. But I, I think we're, we're pretty far along there, and it's just a matter now of the two subcommittee reports being, have a final compilation and then being printed up, so to be sent out to everyone for the joint meeting. At that joint meeting, I mean, there is discussion. If people, if, in that meeting field, well, we shouldn't include this, or, or, that's not a recommendation we, as a committee as a whole, want to do, that can be addressed, and that can be dealt with then. And, but I would suggest that each subcommittee be judicious in terms of the recommendations they make, that, that are not way out there one way or the other. Okay. See what else? Seasonal, seasonal programs, we had the back-to-school, we're 57 and 59 with backpacks. I participated in distribution of those backpacks at Lyons and at Westbrook in 57. We've got a shredding day set up with the Lyons Club, the Mount Prospect Lyons Club, in, is it October, I'm not sure, Paul's got the date here, that we'll be doing at the Rexplex?
21st.
October 21st at the Rexplex?
9:00.
9:00 a.m.?
9:00 to noon.
9:00 to noon. We'll be looking for a couple trustees to show up for at least part of the time. You know, not be the whole time, but it would be great if the trustees could show up for an hour here, or an hour there, just to help out. We don't need a lot of people. It's more, what we do is, as people come in, we hand, we have somebody handing them a sheet of paper that has the Lyons Club information on one side and the township on the other. And then, we have some people help directing them as to where to go. And people there, the, the company's people throw the stuff in the, in the truck, don't they?
No, they're bins, like you have, and then they go up and...
Yeah. So, they'll pull up then, we'll put the stuff in the bins, and then the, the company will, will lift it up, put it in there. So, we only need, if the Lyons provide three people, and we provide a trustee, you know, during, through in the morning for a couple hours, a couple trustees will be, should be fine.
What's the day on that again?
The 21st. I think, what day is that? Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. 9:00 to 12 at Rexplex. And you guys can coordinate among yourselves, too. I mean, if somebody wants to come from 9:00 to 10:00, and somebody else wants to come from 9:00 to 11:00, or whatever, however you want to coordinate that, you guys can talk. And if you can't make it, you can't make it. But, you know, we'd like to have some, some presence there. We also are doing another community service. We do two community services days a year. We do it in spring, we do it in fall, usually late fall. We're not going to have the DMV there this time, because the, the, the numbers were starting to drop off. So, we'll be, what we'll do is, we'll have a different focus for each community service day. One may be more seniors-oriented, and the other one will be more general, you know, services-oriented. We got one other little development, Senator Murphy's office has contacted us about co-hosting a senior day with her office here, which would be like a three, four-hour senior day, where they would bring in resources, and we could provide resources for seniors, helping seniors in a variety of different ways. So, that probably means our community service day this fall will not be senior-oriented. If we're doing that with Senator Murphy's, and I think Representative Busman's office, we'll, we'll have to adjust that a little bit. So, two community services days, two community service days a year, spring and fall. But this year, because the offer to co-host a senior day, we may adjust the focus on these different, on what we do each, each of our service days. Let's see, what else do we have? There's a couple other programs. We have the Thanksgiving program coming up. That's where we will give a, we'll provide a, a box, a Thanksgiving box with, for the full meal to each family that comes into the food pantry. And it's a little different than we've done before, but we're, we've raised funds and are applying funds to provide a, a box with a Thanksgiving meal. So, if a family comes in to shop for their food, in the food pantry, we will then also give them a, a box for Thanksgiving when they, when they, when they depart. And then, we'll have, at Christmas, we'll have the angel tree for seniors, where they indicate what they need, what's valuable to them that they don't have. They'll hang that on the tree, and then people come in and take it and provide that particular product or gift, or whatever you want to say, for, for the individual. So, if somebody needs, I don't know what, pair of boots, they can hang that on the tree, and somebody takes it down, and they provide the boots, whatever the size is, and bring it in for the senior. Then, we also have a Christmas gift program, where we provide money to the parents, a gift card to the parents to buy presents for their kids. We don't do the presents ourselves anymore, because we find it's more advantageous for the parents to be able to provide their kids with a gift, and we help them to be able to do that. So, those are, and then we have the cereal bowl, that's between Rolling Meadows and Elk Grove, where they collect, they, the schools collect boxes of cereal. And then, at the game, usually the basketball game between Elk Grove and Rolling Meadows, we announce the winner. It'll be a little interesting this year, and I have to follow up on this, too, is the principal at Elk Grove, his wife is the principal of Rolling Meadows. So, she's newly appointed to the principal of Rolling Meadows.
Maybe it won't be an easy win for Elk Grove this year.
So, hopefully, we can play off of that a little bit. Because Elk Grove, Rolling Meadows had won the first year, but then Elk Grove has been pretty dominant since then, so maybe this will make it more competitive again. Let's see, anything else? Oh, before you guys know, we had a volunteer lunch today, where we recognized and had lunch for all the volunteers helping the food pantry. It was a good opportunity to thank them, talk to them a little bit. We had a nice turnout, and we've got a, a good group of volunteers to work in the food pantry. They put in about, they put in about 260, 250, 300 hours a month through volunteers. And I think that's, that's really outstanding. Which, at the same time, I will mention on the food pantry, last month, we had 864 visits. That is a record for the amount of visits. And if you remember, three, four years ago, three years ago, we were doing maybe 400. So, it's more than doubled in the last couple of years, partially because of food stamps being reduced, the number of food stamps, the amount of food stamps you get, but also, I think demographics have just changed here, too. We do not put any sort of requirement on who can come and use the pantry. It's more of an honor system, because you never know who needs what at what time. Even somebody you think maybe doesn't need to use it, does. So, it's, but it's been a very, been doing very, very well. Over the last year, last 12 months, we've had 8,533 visits, and we have processed, well, received, sorted, and stocked 184 tons of food. So, it's a, we have, this, our food pantry is rather... So, it's a, we have this, our food pantry is rather, has been a rather significant asset to the community. Kaylee and Jody have done a really nice job on this. And Kaylee is getting her certification to manage a forklift because as we get more food and have to store it in the back, because right now it's spread out over, which I'm very uncomfortable with, we need a forklift to be, get, moving stuff around. Both of them receive it and as we use it. The last thing I mentioned is the holiday party. The holiday party for the township, which we now have after Christmas because before people are so busy. It'll be on the twelfth of January. It's a Friday evening, the twelfth. And we'll be doing a Cooper's Hawk. And at this time, I think we're gonna get the room, we're gonna get the room, the wine room, to ourselves, where all the wine racks are and all the wine is stored. We've, we've become important enough to them where they're giving us the good room. Maybe also they don't like that all those young people stay later and bother all the diners below, I don't know. But it is, it's, it's always sort of a fun time. Okay, does anybody have any other questions for me at this time? No, okay. There's some other issues, but not that important right now. And I, I'll bring things to you when I think it's important that you're aware of them. And if anything comes up that you hear something about, or are, or, or have questions about, you know, at any time, you can call me or call Paul. Let's see here. We'll go to, I guess I get a motion to approve the elected officials' monthly reports?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. All right, so we go to old business, but there is no old business. Well, of course, yeah, no, no old business. And then on new business, we've got a couple things. First of all, I, I need to auth, well, we want to discuss. Little City has come back to us. They are one of our agency grant recipients. They were using the money for respite care and home-based services. They are eliminating those services for a variety of issues, some of which are external. The Clearbrook is taking over actually the home-based services. But what they've asked is, could they, asking for our authorization to use the, the funds that we have granted them for their community, youth, and other services, as noted in the letter that you guys received in your package. So, they're asking for their, our permission to use those funds we've granted for some of their other programs, is basically what they're doing. So, is, let me just have a motion to, to approve, and then a second, then we can discuss.
So moved? Your second?
My second.
Okay, seconded. Now, any discussion on this?
Just as long as it's still just all the services are just for the Elk Grove Township residents, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, yes, they're supposed to be, but there's no way that, in a lot of ways, that these groups can really verify that.
Turn people, yeah, okay.
We started sending a map of the township with the application for grants to reiterate that we need to have all of the services be for residents, but.
Yeah, we've tried, but, thanks, Sue, on that, we tried to highlight the fact that this funds are supposed to be going to Elk Grove residents, and that we ask them to, to quantify that as best they can. That said, is, there's no way that we'll really be able to fully control that. Okay? If there's, we've had a moved and, a, a motion made and seconded. If there's, is there any other discussion? If not, we take roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. All right, the last, the second thing here is a preview of the website. You've got a package there, just look through it. If there's any issues you have with this initial look at what the website would look at, look like, you need to bring that to Paul. And, and raise any issues or questions or problems you have with it. Bring it to Paul, because in November, then, we will come, we'll have the, our, our web designer come to the board, make a presentation on kind of the final, final product. So, we're getting this out to everyone now so that you can look at it, and any suggestions, problems, you know, whatever, whatever that you have, that you can get that to us now. And please don't hesitate. I mean, you see something that you think, oh, my goodness, you know, this, you, you need to have this on the front page. It should be something to click on and be able to move to, or, or whatever. Or, or this is not easy to read, it needs to be cleaner, or whatever. We need to, we need to address that now before we get this, you know, more locked in stone. We will be able, as we go ahead, you know, once this is set up, we will be able to make adjustments. Obviously, you can always adjust your website. But in our basic foundation, as we put this in place, we don't want to be making fundamental changes going forward. This is gonna be a major upgrade in what we have now. It's gonna be much more attractive, much easier to read, and much more informative. That said, like, any input we get in terms of ways you think would be better, or could, could, could be improved, email or call Paul. And Izzy then is sort of taking the lead on this with the webmaster, and we'll, we'll address that then. Okay? Anybody have any other questions? Okay? We go to resolution under number three, is Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-six, the IRMF Form six-point-six-four, which is renewal of participation in IMRF by elected officials. There is only one elected official that is in the IMRF, that is the assessor. We used to have two, the road, the road commissioner was, but we did away with the position. Trustees have never been in the IMRF since we were founded. The supervisor and the clerk, those positions were withdrawn from the IMRF about six years ago, when I was clerk and Mike Sweeney was supervisor. We just felt it was no longer necessarily appropriate to be, to be involved as part-time elected officials to be a part of the IMRF. The road and bridge and the assessor's office felt, decided they'd like to continue. And as long as they're putting in six-hundred hours a year, they are qualified for it. If they're putting in less than six-hundred, you're not qualified for it. And it's an honor system. So, Connie has indicated she's putting in over six-hundred. So, what we would need to do is approve the, the, approve the, the Form six-point-six-four, which we authorize her to participate in the IMRF. Pardon?
Resolution.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Let me get the resolution here. So, I, I guess, I guess what we, what the Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-six is, whereas the township of Elk Grove is a participant in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and whereas elected officials may participate in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund if they are in positions normally requiring performance of six-hundred hours or more per year, and whereas this governing body can determine what the normal annual hourly requirements elected officials are, and should make such determination for the guidance and direction of the Board of Trustees of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees finds the following elected positions qualified for membership in IRMF. And we only have one, which is the assessor. And the date which she became qualified is in eighty-four. And the certification is then by the, the clerk with the approval of the, of the board. So, we're not, you're not necessarily saying that, that the assessor does do six-hundred. You're, well, the way we do it is we say, if the, if the individual participating, elected official participating believes that they've met the qualifications, then we will accept that, is how we've always done it. So, is there a, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-six?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. I would notate note, too. I mean, as we go forward, we could, can we put, could you put positions back in the IMRF? Could we put supervisor's position or the clerk back in the program? Not that we would do it now, but I mean, just asking.
I, I would assume so.
Okay. So, this board could, this board could decide at some point that they could authorize a new supervisor or a new.
If it was a full-time supervisor.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, right. Okay, all right, good. All right, then Resolution twenty-three, twenty-two-three-oh-seven, schedule of Elk Grove Township regular board meetings for next year. Take a look at that. The only thing that I would ask is that, I would maybe, would ask the board for, to change the January to January fifteenth. I won't, don't want to ask that right now, but I just would make that known that I may want to, I may want to ask the board to change the date from January, whatever it is.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second to the, to the, to the, whatever it is, fifteenth or whatever it is.
That's Martin Luther King.
Pardon?
You want to put on Martin Luther King Day?
Huh?
That's Martin Luther King Day.
Oh, then I couldn't do it. I have to do it for that Tuesday. I'd have to do it for, but I'm not necessarily doing it. I'm just saying that I'd like to be aware that I may ask to move it forward. So, the fourth, the, so you're saying if we move it forward, have to be not on a Monday, but on a Tuesday, then, is what you're saying?
A Tuesday or the twenty-ninth, which would be the fifth Monday.
All right, so it'd either be on a Tuesday the week before, or the, or the Monday after. All right, any case, right now, pardon?
Can you do that now? Can you, can they decide which day, what you would?
Well, but I don't, I don't know if I need to ask it or not yet at this point.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the twenty-second, no, the twenty-second could work. I'm just saying, but I, I just, there, there may be an issue there where I'd like to ask to have it moved for January. But I just, would just let people know that I may ask that, okay? Otherwise, we're set. Anybody have any, see any problem with the dates otherwise? Okay? Put that in your calendars, then. Now, I see the December twenty-third, that is right up against.
Christmas.
Christmas Eve and Christmas. So, that is, that is a little tight, but if people don't have a problem with it, I'm okay. Okay? If, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. Okay, Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-eight is the office closing dates for calendar year two thousand twenty-four. I would mention one thing on here. Good Friday Easter, last year, we gave everyone the half-day, where they worked morning and then got off at noon for Good Friday. That became a problem because with the Transportation Department, they, they, they had to get everyone back by noon, so they just had the morning. So, Paul had put in here that the whole day be taken off, that, that we just give, give people the whole day off and make it a, the full day of, day of vacation. Or the other alternative is, is that, is that we have a half-day for everyone except transportation, or that we just have the whole day, as it used to be, have the whole day a workday. So, the question would be is, where would the preference be? I think what I'd like to do is get a motion to approve this calendar and a second, and then we'll go into discussion. And if necessary, we, we can, you know, you vote down and make a new resolution if, if we want to do it differently. So, I think your options would be leave it as it is, and we're giving them the full day. Last year, we gave a half-day, and the year before that, we didn't give any, we didn't give the day off. The other alternative would be a, a, it's a, it's a, it's a workday. I mean, it's a half-day, and we just don't do transportation on that day. Understand, okay? So, it's a, it's a half-day, and we just don't do transportation period on that day. So, basically, transportation is getting off for the full day. Or we do, we do give, we give, we do, we do, we just, I guess we give, we, it's a workday. I guess we just make it a workday, then. Is there, do I, do I have a, let's, can I get a motion to approve this, and we can discuss?
So moved.
It's a second?
Second.
Okay, there's discussion here. What would you guys prefer to do?
We're not, is there not a, we haven't, like, promised a certain number of days or anything, right?
No.
We didn't promise them.
And, and we gave, we gave them an extra, we gave them an extra half a day last year, is what we did, on, on that, so that people could get off and prepare for Easter a little earlier, or go to church in the afternoon. And, and then, it would just became a little bit of an issue in transportation wise. Because they'd pick people up, but then they had to, they had to pick them back up, take them home before noon, rather than at the end of the day.
One of the, one of the issues on that, excuse me, one of the issues on that transportation is that dialysis people.
Yeah.
Because they go in and then they're there for hours, and if we can't come back to pick them up, then they have to get them right, which they do sometimes when we have issues, if the bus breaks down, or whatever. So, it's been done before, but I just threw that out there as a suggestion. George, just say, it's a rush for them to get them out there, do other things, and then come back and pick them up and redo them before, you know, when it's the 12, 12:30, whenever it is. It's a disaster. So, you guys can decide what you want to do.
So, if we give everybody the day off, that means there's no transportation, obviously, that day. Which we're, which is what we're doing here. The other alternative is we give, we have, we do a half-day for everybody and just did it as we did last time, and people, it's gotta be done before noon. Or we do a half-day for everyone except transportation, have the transportation, give them comp. I, I don't know.
We're doing it in the past, how was it taken? How, what were the?
Well, in the past, we, they worked that day. We didn't give them off Good Friday.
But last year was a half-day?
Last year, we gave them a half-day.
Transportation as well?
Everybody a half-day. And then that.
And the residents.
Then they ran into a little bit of an issue with transportation, is they had to get out of, I guess, in particular, dialysis, they had to get out of there by noon, which isn't always possible. So, the question becomes, either we don't do driving that day, or we, we don't have transportation that day, or we, I guess, have a full day of transportation. And what you do with the rest of the departments is, is up to, you know, either a whole day off, a half a day, or a full day they work. Whatever combination of those you want to do. But this, we're giving them, everybody, the day off, no transportation, and no one comes in. And this is pretty well, otherwise, it's pretty well in line with what we've done all along. So, any comments?
Why don't we leave it up to department heads if they get a half-day off, or they have to work?
Yeah, well, we have to, we, in vacation days, we have to authorize. So, I mean, I mean, we could, I guess we could, I mean, they could give, transportation could, I don't know.
The dialysis?
I don't understand.
He was saying that, he was saying that just giving up to department heads, make their departments decide whether you give their department the day off or not. But I, I, we as a board have to make that decision.
If dialysis patients know there's no transportation that day, they'll just schedule, either get rides somewhere else, or they'll reschedule for other days.
We have to tell, we have to tell plenty of fans that we're gonna be closed, or we're only gonna be there half a day. So, you will have to either get your, you know, you will go that day, or you'll have to get somebody to pick you up, because it won't be us.
Yeah, but at least they'll know ahead and they can plan.
See, and, and that's, that's the other issue on a half-day, is that if we, if we want to give a half-day like we did last year, then we just have to be clear, Transportation Department has to be clear that we're done at noon, and if you need to get picked up later than that, you need to make other arrangements.
Yeah. And then some people won't have a problem with that, because they do that, no other instances. If we, if the bus break down, or somebody's on vacation, and we say, we're just overly booked, you know, we're not gonna be able to get you, we can take you, but we can't pick you up. A lot of people are fine, and some of them don't have a problem with it, others do, so it's.
And actually, that may be, that may be better than no transportation at all that day.
Now, was last, was last year, the, the questions that came in, were they not given enough time to get a ride, if you recall?
So, when, when we knew it was a half-day, I say, we, the ladies up front that run the station, scheduling and stuff, they told the people ahead of time, hey, you're usually, what is this, it's on a Thursday? what is this, a Thursday, it's on a Thursday this time?
It's Good Friday.
It's Good Friday.
Good Friday.
Right, oh, it's Good Friday, okay. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if they're on that schedule as a dialysis patient, we can say, hey, next week or two weeks in the future, you know, on Friday, if it's Friday, we're only going to be open until noon, so you're going to have to get your ride home yourself. And we tell them way in advance.
Good. But it was still, you still had issues come up, you said?
Not, well, I would say issues. I mean, we had, it was, it was that they had to get their ride and so they, we weren't going to take them. So yeah, it was an issue with that they had to find somebody to, to get them home. They had to take a taxi, they had a friend, they had a family member, whatever. But a lot of people that we find that, that I hear from them in the front offices, that they have family in the area, but they don't necessarily take them and pick them up from dialysis. They will to chip in if it, if we're having a problem or an issue, but it's not consistent that they'll do it. They depend on us for that Transportation for their family to go to dialysis.
I guess, and I just throw, my, my feeling is, is that we, we changed to provide a half-day and that I think that if we're very clear with people that are looking for Transportation, that we only provide, will provide for half-day and we make sure the office makes that clear up front, I, I think, I think that's, that's appropriate.
I agree.
So if that's the case, if that's sort of the sense of board, then if we take a roll call on this, you should vote against it and then we'll make a new motion. Okay? All right, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
No.
Trustee Keenly.
No.
Trustee May.
No.
Trustee Perns.
No.
Supervisor Bussi.
No. So then I guess what I do is make a motion to accept the Resolution 202308 with the